All right. We'll call the Center County Board of Commissioners meeting to order here at 10 o'clock. Those who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, that sounded particularly nice this morning.
It's almost like they practiced.
Yes. We'll move on to public comment. Any public here for comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? All right, I've got a lot of people in the audience, but I think they're all here for items on the agenda. For the meeting minutes, okay with both commissioners? All right.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 14th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Approve the minutes from Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 14th. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. We have two important proclamations this morning. We'll start with proclamation number 30 of 2024 proclaiming May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Center County. And we've got a good group here, TJ, Mike, Steve, and Bob. If you'd all come and approach the podium and tell us a little bit about the motorcycle safety. I saw a lot of motorcyclists out last weekend really enjoying the weather.
Hello, I'm TJ Wasson. This is Bobby Hammond, Steve Lamar, Mike McGrath. We are members of Centerline Riders, which is a chapter of ABAET of Pennsylvania. ABAET stands for Alliance of Bikers Aimed Towards Education. There's roughly, I think, 45 chapters across the state. And what we do is we promote motorcycle safety. One of the things that Bobby has done here in the last few is, we call it OSAL, Operation Save a Life. He's been going in the driver's ed here at Bellefonte. You've had three different sessions there, so four.
Oh, great.
And it's four classes for each day, so we've got 16 classes.
Is that the one you hold at the Center County Public Safety Training Center by CPI?
No, no, that's different.
Okay.
This is a motorcycle safety and awareness program.
All right.
It's basically a slideshow and like a PowerPoint presentation and then video, all kinds of different things you can run into on.
It's high school driver's ed class.
Yes, and so we present that and then we do one-on-one with the students, give them a little quiz, we take them on, we show them the bikes. So yeah, it's gone really well. We're only in Bellefonte right now, working on the other school districts as well.
Okay.
OSAL has been around, my stepfather Hal Hallow used to do.
Oh.
But then COVID shut it down pretty much. Last year is the first year we could get back into schools and like I said, now we're in Bellefonte, next year hopefully we'll be at all the Center County schools.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
We also did Penns, though. No, we didn't do Penns, but we did at Ford.
Yeah, but some other things we do, we, as a chapter here, we do a lot of fundraising and supporting local. One of our big things that we do is, as Bobby mentioned, he continues the Hal and Natalie Halock, the big ride that we do is the Salvation Toy Run. And so we have, we had bought almost a pickup load full of toys last year and I think it was like $1,500 that we gave. So just some of the stuff that we do, we got, there's a whole list of things, but I won't bore you on all that.
That's all right. You know, there's a lot of poker runs that raise money for a lot of people with medical issues, too.
Yep, we do have something going on at Bellefonte. We're doing a car and bike show with a craft show and the money that we raise there is going to somebody that needs, whether they have, it's a parent with a, with a child, with, they're going to travel. We're giving the money to somebody. We had somebody picked out, they said, no, thank you, but thank you, but, so we're looking for another, somebody else, so.
Good, so perhaps if there's somebody out there with a lot of unanticipated medical bills, maybe they should give you a call.
Yes, look us up on Facebook, get ahold of us that way.
Great. Wonderful. Well, why don't you stay up there a minute? I'll see if Commissioner Concepcion has any comments or questions.
Yeah, thanks for coming and highlighting the importance of this as we're, you know, right at the beginning of the summer season and people need to be aware that there's motorcycles, bicyclists, you know, there's, we need to share the road and do so safely and keep everyone, make sure everybody gets home okay.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Mr. Dershowitz?
I don't think it's lost on us that you're being followed by emergency medical services most. We all, I think we all appreciate the fact that we have to be safe out there. And, you know, it flows both ways. Bike, you know, or motorcyclists need to be safe as well as the folks that are on the road that have to respect the fact that they're, you know, they, they share the road. So they really appreciate everything you're doing and, and just be safe out there and have fun. But it's going to be, if every day is like this, you should be out there nonstop.
We have to work, though. Got to work.
Yeah, what's, what is that?
Pay for that.
That's right.
Yeah, so we remind everyone to be alert, watch for motorcyclists, cyclists, joggers, everybody who's out there enjoying the great weather and sharing the road with the regular drivers. And obviously, as Steve mentioned, Emergency Medical Services Week is also this week, they're the next ones up, so let's all be safe out there. Don't look at your cell phones while you're driving, please.
And a lot of those fellows are volunteers.
Yes, many of them.
Actually, the teacher at Bellefonte High School, Mike Wilson, he's EMS.
Well, here we have a year to practice not being on our cell phones on in our vehicles.
Yes, yes.
Very good.
That would probably be a good idea.
All right, well, unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion and then present the proclamation.
I will move to adopt proclamation 30 of 2024 proclaiming May 2024 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Center County.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting proclamation number 30 proclaiming May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Center County, do so by saying aye. 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 Pose nay. Motion carries. Come on up and we'll present the proclamation. JJ, get some photos for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always good to see you. I'm taking a little bit of Bellefonte on the map.
Jump into the center there, all right.
Thank you, I'll be on the outside.
Are we close, JJ? We need to tighten up a little?
Oh, I can handle that. What am I talking about? Uh, yeah, if you want to move in just a little bit on this guy.
All right, just a second, JJ, we've got one more camera going.
Sorry. I don't have to zoom in on the pen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Figure that out.
I don't know how to edit anything.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Steve.
You have to make this every, every year, May, month.
Whatever happened to the perfect, the perfect mic?
Get ahold of us and Mark.
You have it at the Capitol. All right, so you're out and about, you going to be down at the Bellefonte Cruise or anything with it?
No, I won't be there, but we do have a big ride on the 29th and I'll be there.
I'll be looking forward to seeing it again.
Yeah.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our next proclamation, proclamation number 31 proclaiming May 19th through 25th as Emergency Medical Services Week in Center County. And we have a number of people here for that. I think I'm even missing a name possibly. Tim Nielsen, Sharon Nielsen, and then following with the two Scotts, Scott Roeth, Scott Rossen, and Josh Frenberg. If you'd all please come up to the podium and talk about your various emergency service organizations. And if you do have any events coming up, fundraisers, CPR training, anything of that nature, also please let us know.
Oh, wow. I wasn't prepared for that. Hi, thank you for the recognition. My name's Josh Frenberg, I'm the newly appointed Center County Ambulance Association President. So I was just going to tell you a little bit about EMS. In Center County, we have three advanced life support agencies, 10 basic life support ambulance services, and three quick response services that serve the entire county of Center. And I don't have any numbers to give you, but yeah, it's a great honor to serve you guys. Does anybody else have any comments?
Just so you know, there's always, if you look at Seven Mountains website or go on any of the ambulance services websites, they'll be listing any training. I know you said about CPR trainings coming up. Most of us list our CPR trainings. Any EMT classes, EMR classes are coming up are usually listed through Seven Mountains website or on our, our own personal ones. I know from my service, I'm the EMS chief in Snowshoe, and we're small, we're very rural, and, and I know that I get picked on a lot, but you know, we're already up to like, I think it's like 135 calls for the year.
Wow.
So that's pretty, that's pretty good, might be 140 now. I was away last week, but you know, I know Bellefonte's busier than we are, I know, I don't know what your call volume is, but for us, we covered, you know, 20 miles of Interstate 80, we have 171 square miles with the last state forests, state game lands, we have the rails and trellis that goes through our area. So we, we are very diverse in our population who we take care of on the mountaintop. It's not just our local community, it's a lot of visitors. And when the weather's getting nice, everybody's coming in to do the side-by-sides, four-wheel dirt bikes, you know, they're out in their motorcycles and such, so ours is very diverse. Scott?
I'm Scott Roeth with Bellefonte, Executive Director of Bellefonte EMS and past president of Center County Ambulance. I thank Josh for taking over as Center County Ambulance Association President this year. He has some new ideas, new perspectives, and it was just time for a change. But as Sharon and Josh both said, all the ambulance services in Center County are nonprofits. There are no private for-profit ambulance services. And even when you look at Mountain Dew Medical Center as the hospital, they're still also a nonprofit university, can be considered that also, which is good because we're all community-based. We still have a mix of volunteers, but much of the day-to-day activity is by career staff, full-time or part-time. And I know as elected officials, because we've talked multiple times, you know, EMS struggles on a daily basis. And part of that is with staffing and part of that is financial. And part of the staffing issues is difficulty finding and paying a living wage because of the reimbursement model from insurance companies and that. We've made some progress, but we also appreciate the support of both local government and at the county level. So, you know, Steve mentioned, I believe, any kind of fundraiser, so did Mark. One that almost every ambulance service has in Center County is the annual ambulance membership or ambulance subscription, same thing, the words are kind of used interchangeably. Relatively inexpensive, somewhere between $50 and $100 depending on which community, but it helps and you get something back, it's not just a donation. If you need the ambulance, it helps to cover all or part of any of the out-of-pocket expense that your insurance may not cover. So yes, it is a big fundraiser for the ambulance services, but it also gives you something back as kind of a, I can't really call it an insurance policy, but it does cover some expense if, if you need to utilize an ambulance, you know, call 911 and utilize the ambulance. So I would encourage everybody to, to participate in the community that you live in. And if you don't know, just call wherever you think or call any of us and we can point you in the right direction as to who covers your hometown or your home area.
Thanks, Scott.
Good morning, I'm Scott Rossen, I'm the Executive Director of Center LifeLink EMS. And as far as events, this evening, we're having a community CPR class for EMS Week, a free class. And we've got in the neighborhood of 40 individuals signed up for that, so that'll be this evening. And as Scott Roeth had mentioned, the staffing and the reimbursement is the, are the key items for every ambulance service. With Center LifeLink, we, we've gotten busier and busier. In 2023, we had 7,070 ambulance calls. In '22, we had 7,123. And year-to-date this year, we're up 190 calls from last year. So those are the first two years that we've ever exceeded 7,000 ambulance calls in a year. The memberships, we send out 36,000 flyers. And right now, we're about 5,000 in returns, so that's, that's just about 14%. And we figured it out, if we could hit 25%, if 25%, one in four households purchased the membership, that would replace an ambulance every year for us, so. And I know at the county level, you've posted information on the membership campaigns for the various ambulance services. We certainly appreciate that, we've gone from 11 to 14, but we've got a ways to go for, to hit the 25%. So thank you for recognizing EMS Week and your continued support of EMS.
Thank you, everyone. Do want to remind the folks at home that the reimbursement model for ambulance services is pretty low.
Yes.
It's pretty much a nonprofit field and here in Center County, we have, including quick response organizations, 16 different EMS services, all of them nonprofits. And they survive on a combination of billings and memberships. I'm a member myself of Center LifeLink, and there is the benefit, if you do purchase a membership or subscription, that should anyone in your family need an ambulance, that's going to be essentially no charge. Obviously, you'll take whatever insurance reimbursement you can get, but anything over and above that is no cost to the subscriber or member. I know it's, what are, what are we pushing nowadays for an ambulance call? I mean, 600, 700, 800? Higher?
Yeah, higher than that. It's, we're eight, it's eight to 900 for basic life support in the neighborhood of 1,600 for an advanced life support with paramedics. And membership covers.
Yeah, sorry, close, get up to the mic, I'm sure the folks at home are going to want to hear this part.
The basic life support is in the neighborhood of $800 to $900 and an advanced life support with paramedics is in the neighborhood of 1,600. And the memberships cover unlimited 911 emergency calls. So, you know, if you've got an illness that's going to require you to call the ambulance four or five times in a year, it's a significant savings.
Even once?
Even once, yeah, exactly right.
All right, so you're, you're talking, if you do end up needing, someone in your family needs an advanced life support ambulance, your memberships for half a lifetime would cover that one particular incident.
Right, and you know, you just don't know, insurances vary, so some will pay a much larger portion than others. But even if you don't have insurance or if your insurance denies it, then you don't pay anything out of your pocket for a 911 emergency.
I just wanted the folks at home to understand that not only are you benefiting your community by buying a membership or subscription, but there's a pretty good chance at some point you're really, really going to wish you had one if you didn't have, hadn't purchased one. Turn over to Commissioner Concepcion for comments or questions.
Yeah, thanks for being here to highlight the importance of the work you do. You know, purchasing those memberships, it's not only that sort of insurance policy for yourself, but I would urge anyone to do so because of the need being so great in terms of the cost of running EMS services. And if we want to have these services available to our communities, we really need to be supporting them. And I would also, you know, highlight, you know, we have got, you know, we've been at the Center, or the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania has had some, you know, lobbying efforts around the model for funding EMS and the need, hopefully to ask for these reimbursements to go directly to ambulance companies rather than to route them through individuals, because sometimes these checks are often going to individuals as a reimbursement for the cost of an ambulance. And it's really important when people get a check like that, that they pay the ambulance company, because otherwise, these services are not going to be there for the future. So that's, that's really critical and we've kind of been asking our legislators for some help on that as well.
Great, thanks, Amber. Commissioner Dershowitz, comments or questions?
I think Amber hit it, you know, we, you talk about the money you save, well, the fact that you folks are there and exist, and, and I think so many, so many people just assume that there's going to be ambulance service out there, like there's some sort of right to it or some sort of like little magical fairy dust that sprinkles over the horizon and EMS people come to your rescue. It's not that way, it takes a lot of hard work, a lot of money, a lot of effort, and certainly, as we've all recognized, it's a big, big, big thing to not have ambulance service in your area, because that means if they, if you've got ambulance over here and you need it over here, there's a lag time and a, and a travel time that often is the difference between life and death. And so you, you've, you have a function in our community that, that needs to be appreciated, needs to be supported, and needs to be funded properly. And without that, I think the, the quality of our lives and certainly the spirit in which we operate on a day-to-day basis would change greatly. And we really appreciate you coming in here and giving us that, that reminder that you can buy the subscriptions, be a member of, of the organization, support your local EMS, but most importantly and functionally, you know, just say thank you. When, when those, when you see those vehicles drive by, you know, just, you know, realize that they, they're doing pretty important work. And, and you folks represent that and I appreciate everything you do to keep us safe. And without you, I don't know what we do, because I think we, we all realize that we're going to need you someday, and our families will need you for, most certainly. So, you know, we'll do everything we can to spread the word and, and be advocates for your, your success, so thank you.
Great, thanks, thanks again for coming, appreciate it. We will make the motion and then we have a whole bunch of proclamations here that we can hand out to everyone, but again, just reminding the folks at home, buy those subscriptions, purchase those memberships, and of course, as a group, you're probably all looking for both full-time and part-time employees. Many of the jobs pay, some of them are still volunteer, but in either case, you're still helping your local community.
We would be remiss if we didn't thank Tim and, and his organization for doing all the training and keep everybody up to, up to stuff with all their regulations and, and service, so thank you for Seven Mountains.
As they were talking, I just thought one thing I do want, I do want you to know as the commissioners, and I want the public to know, we were fortunate enough, the Department of Health called us about three weeks ago and said they had some money that they had to get committed in this year's grant, would we be interested in doing a summer camp for students ninth through 12th grade that, it's like the police cadet academies and stuff? We're going to do one in August up at Blackman Shannon, and we're looking forward to that. We will make sure that you know what's going on, you're invited to stop and see what's going on. Really excited to hopefully get some more people to help support the ones that we have running right now.
Well, before you leave, how, how do, how do the kids that want to get involved become active in Camp EMS?
It, it is on our website. We have flyers out in all the school districts. I am on one of the school boards, so I've kind of got an in there to try and get, and so I've got, when I left this morning, there were nine applications already, it just went up on Sunday. We've got nine applications. We're hoping for somewhere between 20 and 30 cadets and get some of the ambulances involved and, and come out and get to know, just like they do with the police officers, and I'm just, I'm looking forward to it, I think it'll be a great time.
So what's, what's your website for the Camp EMS?
It's S.M.E.M.S.C., first letters for Seven Mountains EMS Council, dot org. And then right underneath there, there's a logo that says Seven Mountains Camp Cadet, and you just click on it and it'll take you to all the information.
So what were those five letters again? So it's six.
Dot org, Seven Mountains EMS Council.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, well, unless there's anything else, I think we could take the motion.
I will move to adopt proclamation 31 of 2024 proclaiming May 19th through 25th, 25th of 24, 24, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Center County.
An enthusiastic second.
We have a motion, enthusiastic second to adopt proclamation number 31 proclaiming May 19th through 25th as Emergency Medical Services Week in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. If you've got a nay here, we might smack you. Come on up front.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. I'll put your arm too tough on.
No.
Or it's scuffing like we do.
Sorry, I tripped our job.
You don't want to be in the picture, Tim?
No, thank you.
He's wired by the FBI.
We have one extra. All right, whoa, okay. I think, are we going to need to rotate shoulders here a little bit, JJ?
Four, eight, yeah, so it's right in the middle, y'all can start to jump this way a little bit. Y'all are on the mic.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
That's right, you don't know what it is.
Be safe.
Hey. I don't even want to see you other than a social gathering.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, all right, all right. Several, I got it, important proclamations here this morning. We'll move on to contracts and authorizations. I believe Jonathan has two capital projects for us.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first one is asbestos tile removal abatement at the Center County Courthouse. This will be in the hallways on levels one through four. The proposal was submitted, it will be added to next week's consent agenda.
All right, and cover the next one?
And the next one is the replacement of level-two ballistic windows at the Center County Correctional Facility. It would be a total of 96 panes of glass that will also be added to next week's consent agenda.
But glass is old enough now, it's kind of frosted and you really can't.
Yeah, it has lost its argon between the, the layers of the glass.
Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, glad to see these, moving forward, getting the asbestos out of the courthouse is a good step. And that's a prelude to further work on the flooring in there.
Yes.
It's been a multiple step process. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Move it.
All right, yeah, when you have a building where the foundations date back to the 1830s, there's lots and lots of stuff in there that needs to be abated or repaired or updated. All right, unless there's anything else, I think we can take a motion.
I'll move to add capital project items one and two to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion and a second to add the two capital projects items to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And then an item for the commissioners, John will cover that.
Good morning. Before you, for consideration is a contract renewal with Laser Polnick, who is a solicitor who provides grant consultation services for the county. Services include research, technical assistance, and, and represent, representation on behalf of Center County on various grant funding opportunities. So the grant, or the contract total is $48,000 for a period from April 1st, 2024 through March 31st of 2025.
Thanks, John, they've already helped us land a couple of grants, including one that we received GT Thompson's assistance on, and both US senators toward the Public Safety Training Center. Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Yeah, I think this is, you know, important services for us considering how important grant funding is to a lot of what we do.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Yep, we'll give it a road test and see how it goes, hopefully it'll be, have a good payoff.
Good, all right, take a motion on.
I'll move to add the contract with Laser Polnick Esquire to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion and a second to add the contract with Laser Polnick Esquire to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Now we have an item for financial management, looks like John will handle that one.
Sure. Before you, for consideration is approval of a contract with Susquehanna Accounting and Consulting Services, as well as for the four participating municipalities, as far as Penn State's, Fee and Lou, they are assisting the county and the municipalities with an analysis going into those negotiations.
Good, and we'll, I'm assuming you split that cost up?
Yes, it'll.
Hopefully five ways.
Yeah, we're, we're the, we'll be the, the lead on that and then we will invoice out for those costs, so this will be split amongst the participants.
Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
Nope, sounds good.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
You good?
All right.
I'll move to add the contract with Susquehanna Accounting and Consulting Solutions, Inc. to next week's consent agenda.
What's that good?
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Susquehanna Accounting and Consulting Solutions, Inc. to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Now Kerry has an item for criminal justice planning.
Good morning, I'm requesting the board's authorization for me to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Indigent Defense Grant Program Funds for 2024 to 2025. Program Funds for 2024 to 2025. This is a new opportunity for the Public Defender's Office to receive up to $97,379 to run a period of July 1, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. Funds will support salary supplements, staff retention, or recruitment, and training, and travel, and related supplies. So, this is very specific to what we can use the funds for. Without committing supplantation, we can supplement certain funding that we have in place, and every county is allocated a certain dollar amount. And this is the first year that they've done something like this, and we're not 100% sure if it'll continue in the future, but.
I know we do hope it will because I think 48 other states do provide some level of funding for the public defender's offices at the county level.
Correct.
All right. Commissioner Conception, any questions?
No, just, I'll just reiterate that we hope this grant funding continues in the future to help support these are important services for people in the community.
Commissioner Dershow?
Thanks for processing the grant. Appreciate that a lot.
I will move to approve the grant application to PCCD.
Second.
We have motion a second to approve the grant application to PCCD. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
And then, oh, I thought I saw her. Oh, okay. So, John will handle several items for human service.
Yes. Before you, for consideration is approval of a revision to the Human Services Block Grant Income and Expense Report. This is actually good news. We had to reopen it to incorporate identified expenses and invoices that came in, which also allowed us to shift some costs over to intellectual disabilities, ARPA funding. So, as a result, we've saved funding and we're able to increase our 2022, 2023 retained earnings, which can now be spent in the current fiscal year. So, we are seeking to add the revision to the Human Services Block Grant Income and Expense Report to next week's consent agenda.
Glad to hear that good news, John. I'd like to thank county staff and the 100 or so nonprofits that the county works with in that arena. Any questions, Commissioner Conception? Steve?
No, really.
I will move to add the revision to the HSBG Income and Expense Report to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the revision to the Human Services Block Grant Income and Expense Report to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And then, I believe there's five different contracts or items for human, for Children and Youth Services.
Yes. So, the first two are renewals. The first one is to provide independent living, residential, and reunification services for dependent and delinquent youth. The second one is a renewal with Avanco International to provide child accounting profile systems service provider agreement. Do you want me to add the amounts or?
Um, sure.
Okay. So, for the, sorry, for the first one, the state is paying a little over 2.4 million. Federal is 300,000. In the county's portion is 621,000, and that period runs from July of '24 to June 30th of 2025. Avanco International's, the contract total is 39,300 and change, with the state chipping in 31,400 and change. The county's portion is 7,866. That is also for the same time period of July 1, '24 through June 30th of '25. The third item is consulting services. It's an addendum with Avanco International to the Child Accounting Profile Cap System to their provider agreement, and the contract total is 30,000, funded by the state at 24,000, and the county's portion is 6,000. Again, it runs for the fiscal year of July 1, '24 through June 30th of '25. The fourth item is considering approval of an AFCAR's Upgrade and Maintenance Agreement. AFCAR stands for Adoption and Foster Care Analysis and Reporting System. The agreement total is $4,100, funded as follows, with the state chipping in 3,330, and the county's portion is 832 dollars and change. And that is again for the fiscal year, July 20, or July 1, '24 through June 30th of '25. And then the final item is a renewal with Marykey, Pennsylvania to provide foster care residential services for dependent delinquent youth. Contract total is 160,000. The state's portion is 128,000, and the county's portion is 32,000, again for fiscal year, July 24 to June 30th, 2025. And we're seeking again to have those placed on next week's consent agenda.
Great. Thanks for covering those, John, and thanks to the federal and state governments for providing the bulk of the funding for those services. Commissioner Conception, any questions?
No, no questions. I just, you know, some of these items seem, you know, they're very cut and dry, but it's remembering that these are systems that are in place to help us keep track of and track kids, and each one of those kids that are in that system is a human being and what we're doing here, even when it looks like, you know, dry contracts if this is about kids and their lives and their futures.
Great. Commissioner Dershow, questions, comments?
Yeah, it's, you know, you're talking about contracts into millions of dollars, and it's, it's important to remember that the taxpayers of not only our country or state and our communities are responsible for these dollars, and it's just kind of frightening that we need this level of support in our communities. And, you know, that's obviously our charge here, so continue to support.
Good, good. And thanks again to the staff of children and youth. I know we're running a little light on the compliment there. I know we could use a couple more staff, but in comparison to most of the rest of the counties that are operating on skeleton staffs at this point. And again, I think there's at least one nonprofit in the batch here that we work with. So, yeah, unless there's anything else, we could take a motion.
I'll move to add the children and youth services items one through five to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion a second to add the five items for children and youth services to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We have a very small consent agenda. We'll just take a motion.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion a second to approve the one item on this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We'll now move on to letters of support. This is for an item near and dear to the commissioner's heart, the Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority for renovations and improvements to the Kepler Pool. I believe we originally had two items. We'll table one, but if both of you could approach the podium and give us some background about progress and funding and everything else that goes into rebuilding a pool from scratch.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Cindy Coons. I'm co-chair of the Nittany Valley Joint Rec Authority, and I brought a new face today with me.
Not exactly a new face. Good morning.
Mike Musser. Mike serves as chair of the Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority. Mike represents Belfont Borough, and I represent Walker Township on the authority. So, we're coming before you today to ask your consideration for a letter of support for a grant that we plan to submit to DCED. It's the Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant. It's for continued support of Kepler, or Kepler Pool. It continues in the same theme to update the facility, to bring it up to standards. We did a site visit at Kepler Pool last week with DCED representatives. We're planning to have our next meeting onsite at the pool, which is June 11th at 5:30 p.m. And the purpose of that is to just really make sure that all of the members of the authority and any public that would like to join us, certainly any commissioners who would like to join us, really can see the state of the pool as it is at this time and understand the need for the resources that we have applied for and continue to provide the community support that is required for the project. Do you have any questions for us?
Anything else Mike would like to add?
No, it's just that we just continue to work towards getting these grants, lining them, and waiting for the approval. The road continues to be long and challenging.
And so, after the grant submission for the Greenways Trails and Recreation, it will probably be a bit silent for a while, you know, on the grant activity surrounding the pool as we await some of the decisions on the grants that have been submitted. But we will continue to, continue our efforts to engage community members, certainly have not only our monthly meetings of the authority, but Mike is chair of the Nittany Valley Recreation, which is a nonprofit sister organization that works closely with the authority. They'll continue their work, and so there's still momentum, even though we might not be real public about it in the months ahead.
And we're always looking for volunteers. Always. Any little bit of help.
Great, great. And so, if anybody's interested, they would just look up the Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority, or would they contact their local municipality?
They can do both. We also have NVRI.com. It's the Nittany Valley Rec Incorporated.
And there's a web address, or an email, too. It's NVJRAsecretary@gmail.com. So, Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Association Secretary@gmail.com.
Great. Well, we do know that pools are very important for a number of different reasons. Safety is probably the biggest one, but also economic development and just pure enjoyment and relaxation, all the bonding and fun times that can happen, and of course, youth participating in sports that'll keep them healthy, and maybe even older people swimming some laps.
The big thing is for the children. It's always been my thought process and interest to do it for the children because it provides them an opportunity to be positively involved as opposed to having negative aspects which abound anymore. So, it's a very positive thing, and swimming is a great sport.
Yeah. Turn over to Commissioner Conception for comments or questions.
Yeah, really happy to support this and hoping to see, you know, some of these applications be successful.
Yes.
This is just so important, both for the community building aspect of having the pool as a community center, a space for kids to be safe and hang out with each other and their families in a safe environment. And then, I'll be a broken record on the importance of kids learning to swim really well as a really critical safety component of anything you're going to make sure your kids learn to do when they're in their childhood years. Learning to swim is just one of the most important skills they can have.
Great. Commissioner Dershow?
Amen. It's a great, it's a great program. Every area should have a pool. Every kid should know how to swim, and most importantly, I think it's just such a hub for activities for particularly younger folks, whether you're in it for the sport or you're just in it for the relaxation and the recreation. It's just fantastic and just happy to support it. My father was actually on the original committee in 1970, whatever it was, to help build a pool. So, I remember as a kid the hard work that went into getting it to that point, and hopefully, hard work will get it over the, over the finish line a second time around, so.
Absolutely. When we were there last week, I mean, I definitely had my rose-colored glasses on. You know, the condition of the pool today is not good at all, but, you know, when you consider the possibilities, it's going to be absolutely beautiful.
Yep.
With Governor's Park, it's a nice, it's a nice piece of a foundation for the future that goes beyond, goes beyond me. And that's, that's the idea behind us, is providing something for the community and something for the future, and it's something for people to build upon. So, it's great stuff, and thank you very much for your support and your interest.
You're welcome. Well, thanks, thanks again for volunteering and working hard on something that's very important to the quality of life for a greater Belfont and really even the entire county.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate that. So, I think to try to follow the agenda, maybe we'll take two motions, one for the tabling and then for the approval.
Then I'll move to table the first item under letters of support.
I will second that.
All right. We have a motion a second to table the letter, the approval of a letter of support for the DCED Neighborhood Assistance Program Grant. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Then we'll take a regular motion to the other one.
Then I will move to approve the letter of support from Kepler Pool to the DCED Greenways Trails Grant.
I will second that.
We have a motion a second to approve the letter of support on behalf of the Nittany Valley Joint Recreation Authority for the DCED Greenwood Trails Grant for renovations and improvements to the Kepler Pool. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Tim, any questions for Kepler Pool? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Yes. Now, we'll move on to our check run. Commissioner Conception?
The check that I'd like to highlight today is to the Center County Federation of Public Libraries. Center County Government is a significant funder of our local library system. With that, I make a motion to approve the check run dated May 17th, 2024.
I will second that.
We have a motion a second to approve the check run dated May 17th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. John, do you have an administrator's report for us?
I have a couple items to cover.
Oh, okay.
So, the Center County Tax Office has become aware of fraudulent phone calls that are being made to Center County residents falsely claiming that they have either tax bills due or tax bills that are delinquent. The scammers are posing as representatives of the county tax office and are requesting credit card information over, over the phone. To be clear, the Center County Tax Office will never ask for personal or financial information over the phone. Typically, anything that you would receive from the tax office would be either by mail or certified mail, and there would never, we would never initiate a phone call seeking for payment or personal information in that regard over, over a phone call. So, if you receive a suspicious phone call, do not provide any personal or financial information and hang up immediately and report the call to the tax office as well as your local law enforcement agency. If there are any questions or doubts about the legitimacy of a communication claiming to be from the Center County Tax Office, please don't hesitate to reach out to the tax office for, to confirm whether it's a legitimate piece of correspondence. Any questions on that item?
It's very frustrating that now scammers are targeting local governments, but yes. So, if you're, those of you at home, if you receive a phone call from the tax office asking for credit card information, it is a scam. It is fraud. The Center County Tax Office initially contacts residents either by U.S. mail or certified mail.
Yes.
To start with.
Yes.
Any questions on that, Tim? No? All right.
Okay. The second item is an update on the courthouse retaining wall. So, work is moving along nicely. We anticipate that starting the week of June 3rd, we will reopen the south side of East High Street, which is the uphill side, and we will move the detour enclosure over to the, to the north side, which is the, which is the downhill side. So, if you recall, when the project first started, we were on the north side, and because of weather constraints, in order to keep the project moving, we, we moved over to the south side to continue with the soil nailing, and then we just stayed on that side until that work was pretty much complete. We're now going to move back to the north side, go back to the original detour, and commence with concrete placement on the, on the north side. And that, so we're expecting a shift in the detour again, starting the week of June 3rd.
Great. Thanks, John. So, we'll move on to reports and announcements. Commissioner Conception, do we have a voter registration report?
We do. So, as of today, we have 101,466 registered voters in Center County. That number is up 290 from last week. So, that's significant. Those numbers are comprised of 42,439 Democratic voters, 144 Green Party, 604 Libertarian, 14,078 with no affiliation, and 41,182 Republican voters. All of the other minor parties comprise 3,019 voters, and so that brings us to our total.
And so that brings us to our total of 101,466. Today's party of the week is the Democratic Socialist Party, and they have two registered voters in Center County. Our precinct of the week is Half Moon Proper. That's precinct 55. They vote at the Half Moon Township Building at 100 Municipal Lane in Port Matilda. And precinct 55 has 761 registered voters. At the last election, they had a turnout of 31.4% for the primary election. And we'd like to thank Half Moon Township for allowing the use of their building for, for our elections. That's the report.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. Couple other announcements. Center County Government Offices will be closed on Monday, May 27th, in observance of Memorial Day. And the Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meetings on May 30th have been canceled. Do we have any executive sessions to report or to hold, John?
None to hold, but there is one to report. The Board of Commissioners met in an executive session on May 16th from 2:30 PM to 3:17 PM to discuss personnel matters.
Great. Thanks, John. The remainder of our public meeting schedule, in a few minutes, we have a work session at 11:00. On Thursday, we have a combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00. And then on Tuesday, May 28th, we have our regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00. Any questions from the press? No? All right.